Welcome to the January 8th School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. East Hampton Media Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact East Hampton Media at (413) 203-1360. Dr. LaCliff?
Good evening. There is no school on Monday, January 21st due to the Martin Luther King holiday. There's also no school on Monday, January 28th due to Teachers' Professional Development Day and semester change. There is also no school from February 18th to the 22nd due to Washington's Birthday and the winter break. And there is a half day of school on Wednesday and Thursday and Friday, March 13th, 14th, and 15th due to Teacher Professional Development and Parent-Eacher Conference Days. There is no school April 15th and 19th due to Patriots' Day and Spring Break, so we're just going right through the spring. The next regular School Committee Meetings will be on January 22nd and February 12th.
Thank you. Do we have correspondence?
No correspondence this week.
Do we have gifts?
No gifts either.
Okay. So now's a portion of our meeting for public speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Should I come to the table or do I get to just like sit here?
I think you can just stand.
Okay. Stand.
Well, if you're...
Hello. All right. Hello, members of the School Committee and other guests. I'm Nellie Taylor Donahue. I am the current President of the East Hampton Education Association, and I am here to thank the School Committee for working with me on the funding resolution that they will be voting on this evening. We are in a public education funding crisis in Massachusetts, and as the members of this committee well know, East Hampton schools have struggled eight out of the last 10 years to provide level service funding to the students of East Hampton, and that has to change. We cannot wait for strong economic times in order to provide our students with the schools that they deserve to have in the city of East Hampton. So unfortunately, last summer with the failure of the revision of the Foundation Budget Formula at the state level, East Hampton is still owed every year by the current Foundation Budget Formula over $717,000 that is already allocated to the city but that the city never receives from the state. And that is hurting the public education experience of the students of East Hampton significantly. So I am here to thank you for your support. I am here to inform the public of the Fund Our Future campaign that the educators of East Hampton are joining with educators statewide to fight hard to make sure that the Massachusetts Legislature passes a revision to the state Foundation Budget Formula and that they know how desperate educators are to provide high-quality, fully-funded education to the public school students of the entire state of Massachusetts. So when they do that, when our funding campaign succeeds, the state of Massachusetts is going to provide at least $717,000 every year to the city of East Hampton. And so I have brought to you a check from, to the East Hampton School District, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for $717,346 that you can look forward to receiving after we all as a community join together and demand that the Legislature do their job and make it happen for our kids. So I also want to take this moment to remind everyone that we have a really important event at Eastworks tomorrow night in the Community Room, January 9th at 6:00 PM, to join together as a community and get educated and speak with our legislators, many of whom are going to be in attendance from Western Massachusetts about the importance of this campaign and about the crisis of school funding and how it affects our students every single day. So please join me at that event tomorrow night, and Madam Committee Chairperson, I give this to you.
Thank you. No? Okay. Our student rep is not here. I haven't... So we'll go on to Subcommittee Reports. Do we have a Finance Subcommittee Report?
We do not. We are going to be meeting next...
Monday.
Next Monday. Yes, thank you. So we'll be having one at the next. And then we definitely need to have time built into that agenda for the next School Committee Meeting to be discussing accordingly.
I hear there's $700,000 waiting for y'all.
That sounds amazing. I'm sure we'll find ways to spend it.
Do we have a Policy Review?
We have not met since our last meeting. I did want to check on our pending action. Are we going to be hearing from the SAD group in February? Has there been any update on...
Yes, I believe they are scheduled to come February... When is the... February 12th? Is that a date?
Great. That's our first meeting in February. Thank you so much.
Do we have a Collaborative Update?
I do not. We have not met. My next meeting will be on the 30th of this month, but we will be hearing from Executive Director Bill Deal later on in the meeting. I'm sure he has some wonderful things to share with us about that.
And now Education Policy Update.
Laurie, did you want to speak to us again about the Community Forum?
Well, I would just like to say it has been very heartening to work with a group of educators from around the valley, and it's been sponsored by the MTA. I'm a proud member of the MTA as well as a School Committee Member, and it's important that we all band together as a community, as educators, as School Committee Members, everybody, to see this Foundation Budget changed as it is so late. Over 25 years, we haven't considered the changes in healthcare, we haven't considered the changes with the increasing ESL population, there are students who are in poverty, and special education. Those are the four main areas, and it was very despicable actually that they waited till the last two days of the July session in order to take a stand, the House, after it had passed in the Senate. But I am very excited that the new state reps, as well as Aaron Vega, who has led the charge in these past years, to see this Foundation Budget changed, that they're going to be in attendance here in East Hampton. So it's very important that the community and the different members of different communities come to take a stand because we will have people there who will listen to us.
So do we want to... I'd like to make a motion to vote that the School Committee supports this forum term and that we would like to be sponsors.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now we have a Resolution?
Yes. And so this Resolution, which we looked at the first time at our last meeting, is in concert with a nearly identical Resolution passed by our local East Hampton Educators Association. So shall I read this out loud one more time? Okay. So this is a Resolution in support of full funding for our public schools. Whereas free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy and are required by the state constitution, and whereas all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs. Whereas the state's Foundation Budget Formula, which determines state aid to each district, has been woefully out of date for years, thereby underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential educational services. And whereas an updated Foundation Budget Formula would bring East Hampton Public Schools up to $717,346 in additional state aid each year, allowing this district to move closer to providing all students with the education to which they are entitled as residents of the Commonwealth. And whereas the Legislature failed to pass any Foundation Budget Legislation in the last session, leaving districts, educators, and students without the funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district and state, therefore be it resolved, the East Hampton School Committee urges the Legislature to approve and fully fund a new Foundation Budget Formula by May 1st, 2019. So I would make a motion that we adopt this Resolution?
I'll just second that. Do we have any discussion? No? All right. Easy. I guess the only discussion I would say is that this is just crucial...
Yes.
...in this day and age, and we've just got to do something. So if everybody's ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Somehow I knew that would go through. All right. Wellness. Do we have an update?
No update, but we'll be meeting soon.
Okay. And Health and Safety.
Do we have any update on the white book in the school?
I have tried and not succeeded at getting them to come back out. So my, our friendly health agent, Bree, has taken on the charge, and she has communicated to them, and she's left a message, and she's hoping that she's going to hear back from them within the week.
I have a question. My impression when we were doing this is that they were in favor of coming back when there were kids in the building to see the difference in air quality. So do you know what the delay is?
I don't.
Okay.
I talked with Mike Feeney. I left Mike Feeney a voicemail, and then I also at a separate date spoke with his assistant because she returned the call to me and explained the situation. She thought it sounded like a great idea, and that was before Christmas. That was in December, and so I still haven't heard anything. So Bree said, "If you don't hear anything, let me know." So I did let her know, and she has attempted to make some headway.
Because my thought was, wasn't our target date the first couple of weeks in February at the latest?
Yeah.
Late January, early February?
Yeah. So I'm still hoping for that. I'd like to do it during the winter months.
Okay.
Of course, we haven't really had any snow, so we won't really see any leaking into the...
Right.
Doors, which was one thing we wanted to see in the winter.
Well, one of the issues was the carpet getting kicked up.
It's more of the stirring up the carpets. So yeah, so let's...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm hoping that happens soon.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Do we have any other pieces that anyone wants to add? No? All right. Onto our Superintendent Update.
Well, tonight we have two presentations for you. The first one is with Mr. Bill Deal, who Jonathan already identified as the Executive Director for the Collaborative in North Hampton. And Mr. Deal has been going around to the school districts that they serve and providing kind of a report or an update and kind of information on all that they're doing. So I invited him to come here and speak to all of you about it tonight. So welcome, Mr. Deal.
Thank you very much. So can I sit here? Okay. So is that good? I have more than we need. Two. So as you said, I'm Bill Deal, Director of the Collaborative in North Hampton. I'm one of 26 collaboratives across the Commonwealth. They want to do four different things. First of all, I'll give an overview of what collaboratives are. I know there's some new School Committee Members, we don't know much about that. And then secondly, to talk about what we do specifically with East Hampton, talk about some things that are upcoming, and then invite questions, suggestions, and so on for how we might do our work even better in supporting you. So collaboratives were originally established in the 1970s when the Supreme Court deinstitutionalized , like Butcher Town State Hospital, for example. And all of a sudden, the schools were flooded with young people who they weren't prepared to educate. And so they formed collaboratives, and collaboratively, we developed special education programs that would then be able to serve these kids across districts. Now, over time, we did what we wanted to do, namely, we basically helped districts have their own special education programs. So our services in special ed got smaller and smaller and smaller, and the districts got larger and larger and larger. That's what you want. You want our young people, whatever ability they have, to be educated as close to home as possible. So we were successful in doing that. And over time, we started doing some additional things that reflected the needs of our member districts, that they couldn't do as well individually, but they could do well collectively. So for example, professional development is a major area that we do. We do after-school programs, as you know, in East Hampton. We do internships. We do early education and care. We do a lot of things that collectively can do better and can get more money in as well than we can do individually. So that's kind of always been the goal of the collaborative, and I think all of this is really in support of what we've been talking about in terms of having some collaborative and also some political clout in terms of doing things that we couldn't do as well individually. So one of the things that collaborative does as well is we also have kind of emerged as being a convener for our regional, for our districts in terms of having a voice in different ways. You may have seen, for example, we help orchestrate the superintendents coming together, write a letter about the expansion of Chinese Immersion School. You have seen that. We have a number of, I meet with legislators, all legislators, every year, and we have a convening in Jan, February, February 15th that superintendent is coming to of just superintendents and our area representatives. And I think 18 of our 20 superintendents are coming, and most of our legislators are coming as well, and another opportunity to really advocate for the Foundation Budget and advocate collectively. So we see that as one of the rules as well. So that is very broadly what collaborative is, and they're all across the Commonwealth. We have a much broader geographic area than most, at all. We also are the largest one in the Commonwealth. So in your packet, if you, first of all, the first little bit I just put in here are five, or four key goals, our very first goal is to serve our member district needs. You guys are who we serve. And so everything that we do is on behalf of you and the 35 other school districts in the collaborative. Second thing that we do is we have direct service programs. We'll talk about those in just a minute. So we try to provide quality education for young people. The third one on the back is exemplary educators, professional development, licensure, a number of areas like that to help support your educators. The last one is innovative practices. So we continually are trying to find some new and efficient ways of helping support districts in moving forward. I'll talk about a few of those in a couple of minutes. That's real quick and dirty. Anybody new in the committee want more information, or is that sufficient to give you a context? Okay, good. I'll try to avoid acronyms also. Do my best. So next in here, you have the Services Overview. So it lists the different things that we do. brochure itself does. On the back is our 36-member school districts. So as the superintendent mentioned, I'm visiting these school committees. Not quite 36 meetings because some of them are regional schools, about 27. And it's important to do that to keep people updated on what we do and what we're doing with their districts. So we do a bunch of things in different areas, and I think the easy way to talk about it is the colorful insert in your packet, this part. So this is specifically about East Hampton. These are the different services we provide on the left-hand column, and then the X's are where we were doing this with East Hampton. So the first part are our special education services. You have one student who was at HEC Academy, which is our Special Education Committee Academy in North Hampton, and I believe you have one more who is going this week, I think, to, I think they're going this week to look at it, right?
I think so.
Yep. We do occupational therapy with a couple of your students, and we have some PT as well. Right now, Mount Tom is an alternative school on the Holyoke Community College campus. Right now, there are no East Hampton students there because they have it in the past. This is an academy that is for young people who don't fit in well with the high school for whatever reason. Sometimes their kids have been bullied. Sometimes there are kids who are way ahead and need some additional support for that reason. For all kinds of reasons, kids are there, but they aren't special education students. They're regular education students. And it's pretty much individualized attention. We have 17 students there. They take college courses, part of the college campus life and so on, and almost invariably they end up going to college from there. It's a special program, and they remain East Hampton students. So you count them as your graduates, for example. So that's an opportunity. You have to take advantage of the past, and it's still there for you. The next part that's light green is professional development, all the different things that we do there, and you can see that almost everything East Hampton has taken advantage of, either individual teachers, or we had programs in East Hampton for those. We're pretty proud of the work that we do in that area. I'll talk about some more of that in a minute in East Hampton, but you can see it's pretty broad participation in that area. In technical assistance, the reason there's an X there is because you're part of a Title III Consortium and also a Perkins Consortium, two consortiums that we develop and manage and write the grants for. So Title III gives you funding to support your ELL students, and Perkins helps support your vocational, technical, education classes. In both those cases, we write the grants, get the funding, and then pass it on to you for those particular programs. Again, collectively, we can do it with a consortium. Individually, it would be very hard, impossible, in fact, for East Hampton to get any Title III money because you have to have 100 English-language learners to qualify. Collectively, we got well over 100, so we're happy to do that. Below that, we do some research and evaluation. You may know that this past summer, our research and evaluation team did the analysis of your discipline data to do a report for the AG's office. A really strong team there, and they may do it again this year, I'm not sure, but I think...
We met tonight.
Okay, you did. Okay. Good. Yeah. Yep, yep. And I think last year, they kind of nailed down exactly how to do it and the data date and so on, and are able to support you that way. Healthy Families and Communities is a community coalition of 60 different agencies in Hampshire County specifically, and do a lot of different things around that. So you're part of the Smithy Coalition. We support your healthy families, East Hampton healthy families. They're part of what we do. We support you guys in that area. We every year do the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey. Are you all familiar with that? Yep. So it will be coming up in March, and it's a good way to track some of the asset-based and deficit-based things for your students. Good for you to know, and also good for grants and proposals. We have a hospital coalition, substance abuse, do a lot of work in that area, and East Hampton's been very involved. I really commend you how involved you've been in watching and really paying attention to and helping support your young people in areas like substance abuse, opioid crisis, et cetera. And as you know, vaping and drooling has become a major issue. We're doing more in that area as well. So this is kind of our services to help wrap around the school, make sure kids are there healthy and ready to learn. We do a few things with technology. You're part of a vendor agreement with us, and we do some PE with you. You know, we do a lot of early childhood as well, some of which you may not be familiar with, but one of the sheets here describes a little bit of that. We do after-school programs. You've got three here, and the two at the elementary schools are exemplary programs. They're programs that DESI sends people to because they're so excellent, outstanding results. If you have a presentation by Chris Taggart, he may do one for you. It's really exciting, the work you guys are doing, you guys are doing with basically are getting grants to help support you in East Hampton with after-school programs. We've seen, for example, some noticeable and, not just noticeable, but they are significantly significant gains, for example, in math at one of your schools. They're basically focused on math. It's really cool to go see. So we have a teacher there who does karate, and he infuses math in his karate. It's really funny. And the kids there are improving their math scores in MCAS more than the kids who aren't going to school. So we've got some good data around that, which is really exciting, and we'll have Chris Cumming going to hear more about that. So we have that. Connecting Activities, that is the funding that comes from the state and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to help support internships for young people. So we work a lot with Gail Cannon on that, and we have a number of students we connect with employers in the community. The exciting development in that area is we got money from the Commonwealth to do STEM internships, and the requirement there is the employer's not to pay the students. So last year, you had two students involved in STEM internships. This year, we have a couple more lined up. So it's a really exciting program in STEM fields and get paid for their internships. UMass is doing some of it, some employers are doing some of it, and so on. So again, that's another thing that we provide free because we get money from the state to help do that. I mentioned Perkins Grants before. Crop purchasing right now, you aren't involved in, you may be involved with lower pioneer belly, I don't know. We could talk about that more if you want. It's food, it's office supplies, school supplies, and so on. It might be useful. Talk about that. On the back of this page, it's just a list of the different courses that your educators have taken since last summer, summer year ago. So a broad range of things. There's a lot of transforming education, inclusion of justice. I think you know that we've been very involved with your work in that area, and your educators are very involved with professional development and conferences and so on in that. Again, we're, I've been very impressed by the dedication of this school community in wrestling with these issues, and I hope you know you are not alone. We're now working, for example, with Montague and with Lahar and with several other districts. You are kind of the canary in the cage on this, frankly. Canary in the, call my brother. It doesn't diminish at all. It's extremely important, and it's very important and has been coming up because communities have to wrestle with this as we prepare our students for the 21st century. So I really commend all of you, your leadership on the board and superintendent in this area. It's very commendable and much appreciated. So the last thing in my handouts are a few other highlights of things that we do in East Hampton. The first part of that are some of the workshops we do in-house. So in this case, Superintendent Leclerc might call, might ask us to come in and do a workshop or a series of workshops in district for your educators. So we have a couple of unconscious bias workshops. As I think you know, we're convening the School Community Equity Steering Committee work here, and we've also done strategic planning, inclusion PD, and so on. After-school programs, I mentioned. I mentioned a few things about healthy families. Below that is our different early childhood things, and one thing to note here is we have funding as part of a national program of growing gratitude and generosity. It's a really interesting program stemming from some research out of Berkeley, and we applied for a national grant and got some funding for this. We do a pilot in Massachusetts, and you agreed to be the pilot. It's basically aimed at the fact that our conversations in this country and our attitudes towards each other have lost a lot of gratitude and generosity, that we are having a lot of uncivil conversation interactions. The notion here is can we pilot some processes and some tools and some activities that are going to help build that quality in young people? I know you're doing some of that at the middle school already, I believe. This is really geared towards KFC. So it's a Common Read, parent cafes, and so on listed here. Again, you'd be commended for stepping up and saying, you know, "We want to try it here." And then the backside has the Family Center. You have a very active Family Center that we support. Does a lot of different things. And just last Saturday, we did preschool fair for people in the area, showing them all the different preschools and making them available to folks. Then lastly, I mentioned the Perkins Program and Internships. I hope you know that you're doing computer web design, early childhood, media arts and graphics, and engineering tech at the high school as Perkins Programs, capable tech programs. Again, really commendable. The governor, I think you know, is looking at doing this more and more, kind of comprehensive schools, and you really are pioneering that as well. So a lot of examples of great things that you are doing. The last part here is some highlights. We'll go over those, just gives you a sense of the amount of educators and young people that we touch with our programs and the size of the work that we do. So let me talk about a few things that are kind of coming down the pike and then have questions or suggestions from... I think you know that we've been doing a lot of work in trauma-informed practices. We're expanding that. We've gotten some additional funding to help support that work, and so we have some teachers coming to some of our workshops. That's an area where we're doing additional work that might be interesting and helpful to you. We do a lot of ELL work, required consortium, but we also do the required courses for DESI, for administrative and educators. We're doing a lot more with STEM, which is important. STEM is science, technology, engineering, math. Okay, excuse me about that, Brad. Doing a lot of social justice and equity. We are doing more with finding ways of integrating technology in the curriculum, and this is a major area we're working in, doing a lot with Google Classroom. You have a couple of people who are certified trainers now in that area, and a lot more with personalized and competency-based learning. Those are the kinds of things we're looking at, and we're also looking at something else which I think is important. Right now, you're probably spending a fair amount of money sending some of your high-special needs kids out of district. And you have a cost both of sending them in a district to probably a pretty expensive place and transportation costs. And transportation costs, you don't recover. They aren't covered by the circuit breaker, for example. So we're trying now to look at, we start bringing programs back into the region that are now outsourced. So can we help our districts save some funding and transportation money by identifying groups of students who are being placed in, in some cases, 60, 70, 80 miles away and bring them back into closer to home, quality service, and provide some savings? So we're working on that. We're helping districts with some transportation costs, special education transportation. So we're trying to also look at areas where we might be able to help districts collectively save funding in this critical crisis of spending time. So that's quick and dirty part of it. We have a wonderful website. Encourage you to look at that. I think Jonathan hasn't, I think you'll say it's a pretty detailed...
Detail is a word.
Detail, and you can get lost in it pretty easily. But we do do a lot of stuff, and it's still accessible. So I'd love to have questions or if you have ideas, you know, could the collaborative look at this or help do that, or here's a need we've got? Totally welcome those ideas here or email me. So I'd love to have questions, or if you have ideas, you know, could we collaborate, look at this, or help do that, or here's a need we've got, I'd totally welcome those ideas here, or email me.
I'm curious about the East Hampton Family Center.
About what?
The East Hampton Family Center?
Yeah.
I've never heard of that.
It's, I forgot what church it's in.
It's in the Old Town Hall.
Old Town Hall, yeah.
In the flywheel space, Monday, Tuesday, and Friday mornings, I believe.
Oh, okay.
I should have known that, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was supported by C-11, that's really interesting.
So we've got, we have a state grant, which is called Community CFCS, Communities, Family, something, something, which basically supports the Family Centers in Hampshire County. So we provide the funding for that Family Center. So it's, and it's really a very active one, a very great one, so yeah. So you have to go there, is that right?
I don't, but I've worked with them through the library...
Oh, that's right.
And the previous coordinator had been our storyteller there. They have a brand-new coordinator this year who's fantastic, and it seems like they're doing a lot of cool new things.
They are, yeah, yeah, yeah. Great, thanks for asking.
Thank you. You mentioned the support of like Healthy Youth Coalition, and as you know, we lost grant funding for that with Boots Position, and what can we do to help prevent all of this substance abuse, especially with vaping? What can we do as a community without that grant funding to...
Well, I think that we should, I don't know who the right person is here, but you should talk to the Smithy Coalition, who has a larger Healthy Hampshire grant, about coming back into that work, because that was, that was what we were doing with other districts and doing in parallel with East Hampton. So that's definitely something we should pursue, I'll make sure the right person is, I don't know if you have an idea, Allison, who...
I think Julianne would be a good start.
Julianne, okay.
Kendra, our district nurse.
I'll make sure Julianne hooks up with our folks. Yes, good. Thanks for asking, that's great.
Any other questions?
Good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jonathan, for all your support, and of course, you know, long-term support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Before you leave, the only thing I wanted to say is, when I was on the Collaborative Board, I can't say enough of support for just going to a meeting, especially when it's in Northampton, and sitting and watching all these school districts work together, it's really, I mean, Jonathan, am I right?
Yeah.
It's really very cool to watch all these districts get together, put their heads together, and discuss different issues.
Right.
Yeah, it's amazing to go there and see all the districts represented, I never, you know, going into it would have guessed just how far-reaching you guys are, and... Okay, it's been a really...
A lot of personalities, they're all united in improving outcomes for young people in fact, in Hampshire County, it's really a thrilling meeting. They're open meetings, next one is January 30th in Northampton.
Yeah, and obviously, the Collaborative does a lot for East Hampton, but there's so many smaller districts as well, that I know your services are just crucial to them, and really helps them sort of make their own cases for what they need that I really don't think they could do otherwise.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to throw that in for you, Lee, because I just think it's a great experience.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will we see you tomorrow at the forum?
You will.
Great, awesome.
He said to me last week, "I'll see you on Wednesday," I said, "No, no, Tuesday."
Say, oh.
Oh.
So are you going to do the...
I am, I'm doing something right now, I'm bringing it up, I'm bringing it up there. I'm doing it from my laptop.
Awesome.
So I wanted to show you just a few things tonight. We have, I'm going to start in another place, so, I'll start right here. We have the new website up and running. So if you have or not noticed that yet, I wanted to call attention to the new website. As you know, I've talked about this a little bit, and I have to give a lot of props to Ashley, our IT Director, who did this like from scratch himself with no money, because we had no budget for it, so he did this at home every night until he got it to where he wanted it to be. So he deserves a lot of kudos for doing it, it's still a work in progress, he stopped by my office tonight to let me know that he's still working with Julianne and Sapphire on the equity page, so there are some pages that just didn't even exist before, that we couldn't bring over from the old site, we're creating from scratch. So he has been working diligently on that, and we will continue to add to this as we get things. You can see it also incorporates, if you look on the left, our Facebook feed will now be, will drop into there, and I will eventually get a Twitter feed that will drop into there somewhere. So we're trying to be more up-to-date with the information that's provided on our pages. You can go to all the separate school pages as well, but I just wanted to point this out to you. It's the same address as it was before, so the old site doesn't exist. So if there are things that are missing, or that you liked from the old one, or that you think should be added, please send Ashley an email, send me an email, get that information out to us. The other piece that I wanted to point out is, at the bottom of that left-hand column, you'll see the anonymous alerts button is there, we got a lot of anonymous alerts, and we are doing a soft rollout now, the letters are starting to go home to the families, and we are going to, in the next week or two, we're going to be doing the student presentations for the middle school and the high school, they're the ones that might use an app, and so I just wanted to poke around and show it to you a little bit and tell you what it is. Okay, so anonymous alerts, I'm going to skip back to my presentation, is really an anti-bullying mobile app. It's also, it's on our website, so you don't have to have a phone to use this, you can click right on the button after on the website, and I'll show you how that works in a minute. It's simple, secure, and it quickly enables students to report incidences related to bullying, cyberbullying, mental health issues, family problems, self-harm, substances, issues such as harassment, weapons, anything that will warrant immediate attention by a school official. The reporter of the incident can establish anonymous two-way communications with school officials. Anonymous alerts encourages those who feel vulnerable to step forward and report something. It will help us, and through our submissions, it will give us information about incidences in our school, it's one-way, it's one-button reporting, it's anonymous, it can be anonymous, it doesn't have to be, but it can be. Students will also have an avenue, or parents will have an avenue, to attach screenshots or text messages, anything that like in real time, they want to make sure the administrator gets. It will help us by kind of disaggregating our data as to what's happening where, if we're seeing trends and incidences in the cafeteria, or in one particular school versus another school. There's a Health Resources section where we have embedded both national and local health resources for people. Students can also receive emergency notifications. If you recall, I, this was my graduate work, but some of you with kids that are in college or recent graduates, on college campuses now, kids get like text messages, there's a lockdown on campus, you know, we could conceivably do that with this app to our students. You can use it on iPhone, iPad, Android, and Chromebook, the app is available. What can students report? I've listed some of the issues that they could report, this is again, students, parents, community members, and that's, I'm going to show you right now how it works on our website. So someone, if they have the app on their phone, they could use that, but if not, and they're on our website, they just click the button, it will take you to our anonymous alerts page, where we have a kind of a rollout letter, and about halfway down, it tells you to go to this website, and you can select a language up in the top left-hand corner, so we can do English, we can do Spanish, whatever language we want. The system, it says in the red highlighted area, I just want to note, because it's not that big, let me see if I can, oh, I can make it a little bigger. This system will be monitored between the hours of 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. In other words, that's when administrators will get the reports instantly. After that, they'll receive the report the following morning. So if it is an emergency, that's when they call 911, or if it's something simply that the student just wanted to get this alert or report in, not with their other friends around, they can do it after hours, but they have the information up here that they're not going to necessarily receive a response after 4:00 PM. So there's a dropdown menu, are you a student, a parent, a staff member, a community member, security personnel, administrator? So what is your role in the district? So you could hit student, then you would select a school, and we could say East Hampton High School, and then the student can write a narrative. I saw a student, whoops, being bullied in gym class today. And they can simply hit submit there, if that's as far as they want to go, if they have any other evidence that they want to attach, there's a button that's in yellow down at the bottom, they can attach a button. Then the administrator will get an alert on their phone that they have this message. They may respond back to this person anonymously, they're given, the person is given a code of numbers, they don't, their name's not listed, but they may respond back and say, what gym class, who was the teacher, was this, you know, in the gym area, was this in the locker room, do you know the name of the student? They may ask questions to get more information, and it would kind of go back and forth, but the texts would all be anonymous, it's encoded, they don't know who they're texting, but a student can leave their name, or a parent can leave their name if they want to, there is that option.
Allison, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So the administrator that receives the notification is specific to the school?
Yes.
Okay, and perhaps somebody here as well?
Yes, so we have, we have aligned all of these to be assigned to the person directly that would be the most helpful. But if it is something like a school threat or a weapons threat, anything that's threatening is going to go not only to the administrator, but to our school resource officer, he'll get an alert on his phone. If it has to do with cyberbullying, Ashley Barstow will also receive a report of it. I can see all of the information on my phone, I have access to all the reports and where they are in process. So I can tell if a report was submitted to the high school, and maybe it's after 7:00 AM and no one's gotten to it yet, I can, I see that information as well. So we can monitor it, and then we can also collect data at the end of the year, you know, what kind of reports did we receive? If you recall, last year, you had a bias-related incident report, just like a paper on your website, we never, not, not, not a single one was ever filed, maybe there were no bias-related incidences, but I have a feeling that part of it is because kids don't like to do like paper things on a website, they much, they're more in an app world, and I think that knowing that it's anonymous, knowing they can just do it and shoot it out there, you know, and there is a way, the administrators did ask, well, what if it turns out to be a false report? We can block, we can notify the company, and they will block that number for, we can set a parameter, one month, or a year, or whatever, so there is a way to kind of address some of those issues. This is used in Westfield, it's also used in a couple other communities, if you want to check out their website. We contacted this company and said, we want something like this, and they agreed to give us, give us this product at a greatly reduced rate, because they wanted to really assist our school district, because we were so interested in the product. So I'm hoping that we can continue to use the project, product in the future, of course, it will depend on funding to support it, but I think it will be interesting, I think it will be another tool for us to kind of get real-time information.
So I just want to clarify, Lee, if someone was to report that they were worried that a student was in danger of harming themselves, who would that go to?
It would go to the administration, and it would probably also go to the school nurse or counselor.
Okay, so is that like an automatic process?
There's a...
This is so cool.
Yeah, there's, we have to click on...
So it's not going to just one person?
It's not, no, none of these are going to just one person.
Depending on the, on the problem, it's going to multiple people, so that, because normally, you would find all those people...
And we also have, we also have the ability, we worked with the police, so we also have the ability, if we see something that we determine is a safety issue that warrants the police, we can forward it to the police department, even though they're not on the direct line, we can just forward the message to them.
Okay, but you already got together as a team and decided who you're going to...
Yes.
Wow, that is very cool.
The administrative team, and our SRO Rick met with us, the chief, I talked to the chief about it, I talked to the mayor about it, I handed everyone about this.
Okay, so one of the things, you mentioned that letters are going out.
Yes.
Are they going out in English?
English and Spanish, the two languages that go in there.
Okay.
Do you want another language?
Well, no, I'm just thinking that, I mean...
We did English and Spanish.
I think that when the anti-bias thing went out, it was strictly English, and, you know, other families aren't going to know what it is.
The company provided the letter in English and Spanish, so we didn't even have to hit the translate they gave to us in both languages.
So in terms of, so the, in terms of their current practice, right, I'm going to say this, I think I'm right here, but correct me if I'm wrong, is that, so if somebody reports a bullying incident, they get a, they get a, they get a report back after the investigation, correct? Is there any kind of link to this, that they would be getting any kind of feedback given to the person who did the reporting, or is there any...
Well, they would at least get a, thank you very much, we're going to look into this after, you know, they get a, they get a message like this. They might get follow-up questions, they might get a message like, we have resolved this issue, thank you very much. But keep in mind, for state reporting of bullying is still going to warrant, if there's an investigation for bullying, and then we put it on here, it's still going to warrant that paper.
Right.
So it's still going to be that stuff that goes home to families or whatever, that process is not going away.
Right, okay.
It'll still be there. This is an added step.
Yeah, I think, and so you're saying that they may get some sort of response, I think, I mean, I think that would be important.
Yes.
That there'll be, you know, it sounded that there'll be follow-up questions, but even afterwards, some, because they may not be the person who's, you know, if we want to encourage people to actually keep using this, right?
Yes.
If they get, if they feel like they throw things out...
If you see something, say something.
Right, and if it gets, if they never hear anything about it, they're going to be like, well, what's the point of doing this anymore?
Which I think has been one of our challenges as a school district.
Right, so just making sure that we do that sort of follow-up of like, you know, not just the thanks for reporting and your follow-up questions, but whatever, how many times later saying, this is what's happened, and this, you know, to whatever, to within company and jelly, we can do, but...
I also want to point out one other thing before we move away from this. If I click on bullying and teaser as my incident, there's also a section for definitions, because very often, people will say, oh, my child's being bullied, they're not really being bullied, it's two little children on the playground that are having a little disagreement, or, you know, it's something developmentally appropriate, but bullying is a term that actually has pretty strong meaning, so I think that it's important that we include the definitions when we talk about this, so we've included them there for people to reference, so that if they're unsure... So, we've included them there for people to reference, so that if they're unsure of what they're really reporting, they can look at the definitions, get some insight.
Great.
Are there definitions for other categories?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Very cool.
Oh, no, oh, no, I guess there's not. We talked about it, but I guess there's not. There's just those four.
All right.
Cyberbullying, harassment, bullying, and depression.
I wasn't thinking, absolutely had to, I just...
Yeah.
Was wondering. Okay, great.
So, it's on our website, and it's also on an app. That's all I have.
I think it's so exciting.
I am, I'm really talking about this.
I really think where this also, aside from bullying, where I see this really benefiting is a lot of times, students are worried about another student.
Yes.
And they really don't know who to tell, because they don't want to get that student in trouble, and they don't want to lose that student as a friend. And this provides an avenue for them to be able to say, "Hey, I'm really concerned. I see this going on, and I'm worried about this person." And just to know that, that message actually got heard, and yet, they haven't really, it feels better than, you know, stepping forward and telling someone that name.
Where's the privacy also for those that are reporting that are fearful for blowback as students on student?
Well, I think that, I'll just say that, my understanding of the product is that when you submit something on the app, it's instantly encoded. The only disaggregation we would have is if it's a student, or a parent, or a staff member, we wouldn't know anything beyond that, and what building they're in. But we wouldn't know anything beyond that. So, a person can submit something anonymously, it's encoded, and the administrator may respond back to them and ask for more details. And the student may or may not choose to respond with more details. So, they can, I think, have a little bit of control over how much information they share. But the administrators, we've talked about it a few times, I think that they're looking at this as an opportunity to maybe address some issues before they get to be big issues. So, we're hoping that, we anticipate there may be an increase in the number of things that are being reported to the administrators upfront. We are talking about that, and we're kind of preparing for that. But I think in the long run, if we know that someone is experiencing some kind of issue, whether it's depression, or whether it's substance abuse, and just to know that someone is reaching out and kind of trying to address that with them, that person, I don't think they're going to know necessarily. Maybe they, maybe they guess, but there's not going to be any descriptors that detail who is submitting the report, unless the person wants to give any descriptors.
I don't mean to be negative nor cynical, but what I worry about are hoaxes and...
Yeah.
People inventing things and not having a way to follow through and see who really said that. I know you can block the number with the code and all of that, and that's good, but what about getting who initiated something that wasn't true?
Right. And I don't know if this, I don't know if the company, I don't think they'll let us do that. So, that may be a challenge. But we did speak with Westfield Public Schools, they're very positive about it. They've had it for four or five years now. The Newtown Public Schools in Connecticut have it. I mean, it's, it's used across the country.
Right, okay.
It is a product that's used across the country. Maybe they've dealt with that in other communities, but I haven't asked that question, but that may be a challenge.
My guess is that the person would be able to have that hoax once, and then, of course, they're blocked. So, it would take multiple friends and cohorts to be able to keep it going. I don't know, I think just to try this is a phenomenal thing to do.
Right, and that's why we're piloting it for the rest of the year, and knock on wood we get the funding that we need, and... And that's all I have for my section.
Great. Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, that was a nice, nice presentation. So, now matters for action. All those in favor?
I move to approve the school payroll dated December 2018 in the amount of $542,712.06.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the account's payable authorization for payment dated December 2018 in the amount of $432,650.06.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the school payroll dated January 3rd, 2019 in the amount of $507,628.98.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the account's payable authorization for the payment dated January 3rd, 2019 in the amount of $84,280.42.
Second.
I know, I always...
I know, I just... Okay, all those in favor?
And I move to accept the minutes from our regular session meeting on December 11th, 2018 at 6:00 p.m.
I second that. Any discretion? All those in favor?
I just have my hand up.
I think that's it for my discussion.
And then, we have the school calendar.
Can we, can I, can I ask if we can see the school calendar?
Sure.
Nellie, Nellie and I have not, have not come to all our understandings about the calendar yet.
I fully take ownership of that, and I think that's my authority.
If we could, if we could wait, Nellie and I are scheduled to meet on this...
On Thursday.
Thursday, so if we could just put it off. I'd like to just have the union's support before we approve the calendar, in case there's any glaring things that we're missing.
Do we need to move to table?
So, it'll be the next school committee meeting? Okay.
So, you moved to table, okay.
Well, it sounds...
Well, we don't have to... Okay, we are ready to move into executive session. So, we'll take a, we're not adjourning, but we are moving into executive session. We're gonna take a few-minute break to...
You can't go anywhere.
And we are not coming back into open session.